Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited that everyone's here. We've got a large crowd today. And welcome to those at home. We look forward to you joining us for our BOC regular meeting agenda scheduled March 7th, 2024, starting at 7:03 PM. Ms. Jones, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner McDonald. Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present. Item number three is prayer and pledge. Vice Mayor Butler.
Lord, we mean today to take matters of business, get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, important supreme wisdom upon our activities, so that our affairs may reach successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is mayor's comments. I just thank our officers here today who are helping to keep us safe and Sergeant Hill outside manning our metal detector, very important for our safety. And I just want to let everyone on the board know, we have new members. So I think the planning commission also needs to be aware of this, that we passed an ordinance, I think, at the beginning of the year, Rachel, or the beginning of last year.
Yes, ma'am, it was a resolution, I think, last year.
Yes, I'm sorry, a resolution, that only city purchase devices that are issued to us can be used during these meetings, any meetings, planning or board. I just wanted to point that out. So let's just make sure that we have our city cellphone and iPhone, and if they're not working correctly, we have an IT department that can help with that. I know that some of us have had issues with email working, so let, you know, we can just check with the IT department on that. Also, it's very important that our citizens who are watching from home can hear us. So just make sure that your mic is hot so that they can hear everything that's said and speak loudly and clearly into the mic. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number five passes 5-0. Item number six, citizens' comments.
There are two tonight, mayor. The first is Ms. Linda Williams.
Hello.
Aye.
My name is Linda Williams. I live at 7606 Hurley Lane, Fairview. And I'm here representing our women's organization called Family and Community Education. And I wanted to let all of Fairview know that we, this year, developed a scholarship for Fairview High School. Any applicant, anyone who wants to apply for our scholarship, it's a $1,500 scholarship, and it's a one-time payout. And the school counselors have all the information, all the paperwork, the application, everything about the scholarship. And the deadline to apply is March 15th, so we're anxiously waiting to get these applicants in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Mr. Brian Beathard.
Thank you, Brian Beathard, 704 Fair Street, Franklin, Tennessee. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I appreciate the opportunity. Commissioner Johnson asked me to come up and just introduce myself. I'm one of the county commissioners for Williamson County. I serve the 11th district. I work very closely with the first district commissioners Ricky Jones and Lisa Hayes. I've served with Ricky Jones now for 14 years. Tell you, he works very hard for Fairview. I'm going to be running for, I guess I am running, for the 65th District House seat. Sam Whitson is stepping down and has asked me to run in his place, and I wanted to introduce myself to you in that capacity as well. I know we just got out of an election and everyone needs a breather, and that was another reason why I didn't plan on speaking, but that one will be coming up August 1st. And then lastly, I just want to thank each of you for what you do. As a county commissioner, I know this is something that you do out of love of your community and love of the citizens, and I appreciate your hearts and I appreciate your minds and I appreciate the time that you put into everything you do. And that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, award and recognitions, city events. Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Just want to let everyone know that the next city event that we have is the Easter egg hunt, which is on Saturday, March 16th, at 10:00 AM at Bowie Nature Park. It's going to be located behind the playground, and if it rains that day, then we will reschedule for that. And follow us on social media to stay up to date on that. And just a reminder, we are coming up to that spring stormy weather. So to stay in a loop on weather alerts and important information regarding the city, you can simply text FVALERTS to 88877, and that's totally free. You'll receive all the alerts that we put out, including weather alerts as well. That's all I have tonight, mayor.
Thank you. Item 7B, tonight, we are very excited to recognize the Fairview Marching Band and Color Guard. If Mark Judd will come forward. Yeah, I'm going to let you speak about the accomplishments for the year, and then we'll have them come up and we'll introduce them and we'll do a big picture.
I do appreciate this time to come here. I'm Mark Judd over at Fairview. And yeah, it's a nice second year with the marching band and can't be more proud of having the opportunity to work with the kiddos. Just significant growth these past two years together. And just in two years' time, we've grown almost 15 points in skillship, which is huge when you think of marching band scores. It's like going from a, you know, from unpassing grade to really well. And these kids, they're really just great hard workers. They've been such a warm welcome to myself, moving here from California, and just great, great kids. I'm so proud of them. We, at the Tennessee Small Band Championships, got, I'm trying to remember the score, third overall in music, which is pretty phenomenal. And just on Tuesday, we went to the MTSU, I'm trying to get everyone here, we went to the MTSU Concert Band Assessment and got superior ratings in tone color and musicianship, which is the highest honor. So these kids are really hard workers, and we have many of them in the audience I'd love to recognize here tonight.
And I have something I would like to read, and also the email you sent me, you just addressed that with the, okay, that's perfect. So we're recognizing the Fairview Marching Band and Color Guard recognition tonight. Congratulations to Fairview High School Sound of Gold Marching Band and Color Guard for an amazing final production of Beetlejuice at the Division Two Band Championships at Stewart Creek High School, Saturday, November 5th. The students put everything they could on the field this season and performed amazingly. The teachers, administration and community cannot be prouder of the accomplishments made this year, including a 15-point jump from the highest team score last year and winning third overall music at the West Tennessee Small Band Championship on Saturday, October 21st. This year's team put Fairview Marching Band on the map, and the city of Fairview is so proud of all our team's hard work. A huge shout out to all of the staff, students, booster organization, parents, administration, faculty, sponsors and community who've helped make this program a success. And we wish you all a continued success. And if you'd like to call the band members up, then you can tell us who they are.
We have one of our Woodwood and Section Leaders, Bailey Knolls, she's going to be coming up right now. We have in our front ensemble Kieran Urbaniak, she's here today, Luke McAllister in our Color Guard, and a phenomenal Barry Saxophone Player, Davis Kidder, really awesome alto player, actually going to be at the Williamson County Jazz Honor Band next, week after next. He's one of our soloists. So really great set of kiddos.
All righty.
Oh, oh, I didn't see, and Cadence Grigio, you were blending in. We have an eighth grader Cadence Grigio, great, great low brass players. Sorry, I didn't see you. You were blending in with all the white.
Right up here. If y'all will come right up here, and we're going to stand behind you. Rachel.
We'll be off to Orlando, Florida in just three weeks.
Yay. Okay, item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A, city manager comments. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, mayor, board. I just have one tonight. I'd like to congratulate an employee that has put in five years of service to the city as of today. And not every day is glamorous, but every day she has put her heart and soul into her work here at this city, and she is a tremendous asset. And I just congratulate Rachel Jones for five years of the city.
I'd like to get a picture. Can we all go around front?
Seems like yesterday.
You know, that's what I'm about. Documenting.
I'm going to get him this one.
Yes, absolutely. I do have to say that Rachel works very hard, and she puts up with me. And I've mentioned this before, but I don't have a clock in my head. When I think of something, it's like I've just got to call somebody, and it's usually Rachel. And I have, you know, these ideas and just need some feedback and, you know, somebody I can bounce ideas off of. And it doesn't matter what time it is, she's always willing to listen to me. And she works so hard, and I'm just so proud of you for your five years. And many more. Was that all, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Item number nine, consent agenda. A, minutes from February 15th, 2024 Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 9A passes 5-0. Item 10, old business. 10A, second and final reading, ordinance 2024-02, an ordinance to amend the Fairview zoning ordinance, Article 6, residential district regulations to create the RS 120 Estate Lot Residential District by adding this zone district as Section 6-105, and renumbering the existing zone districts, Section 6-105 through 6-114, to Section 6-105 through 6-115. City planner, Mr. Greer.
Board, this is the second and final reading of this. If passed tonight, it would create a new zoning designation. The RS 120 gives a minimum lot size of 120,000 square feet, which is just shy of three acres, essentially tripling our RS 40 zoning district that currently exists, that is 40,000 square feet, just shy of one acre, which would allow for residents to rezone their property to accommodate this.
Mayor is the sponsor of this. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Would anybody like to say anything about the item? I'll just say what I've said in the past. Basically, when we rezone, I'm sorry, annex from the county to the city, Fairview City, it comes from a five-acre zone to a one-acre, which is a big transition. So basically, what we were looking at is having something that transitions a little better from five acres to three acres to one, and then let the applicant choose anywhere in between what they would like to come in as, or ask the board for that. Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Item 10A passes 5-0. Item 11, new business. 11A, Resolution 09-24, a resolution of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, designating certain LISO items as surplus and authorizing their disposal. Police Chief Humphries.
This is simply just a request to new city property surplus so we can get rid of it via online auction. You'll see in their packet, you had a spreadsheet. The first few items were patrol cars that were in the purchase of 2012. I think you heard of that big purchase. They're still on the road. They are a little long in the tooth. We're trying to get rid of those. And then the rest of that spreadsheet is items from LISO, which is the military surplus that we've been active in, that has now eligible for sale, and we're looking to sell that.
Chief, are you saying I'm old or just been here longer than Ms. Jones?
However you want to look at it. That was some time ago for a patrol car.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Questions of Chief Humphries? All right. Ms. Jones?
Mayor, I guess you're still pretty active in the LISO program?
We are. The program, not from, due to us, had stalled a little while. The federal government had kind of put the brakes on it a little bit, a lot of logistical stuff. They got back up and running, so we did also. We've just started acquiring stuff again, and I think we had a resolution here a while back, accepting that program. And that was one of the requirements that we now had to do that yearly. You'll see that again when that year runs out. We'll just present that back again for you to take into consideration. And we've found it to be very profitable. I think we've acquired, I mean, Tom, up to five patrol cars through that program, a little over $200,000 in funds, and very little money in that, going and acquiring those things. So we believe in that program. It's been good to us, and it's been a source of revenue that we continue to try to tap into.
No, thank you. More or less, just wanted you to explain it again, because maybe you're familiar with it, but thank you for that, going the extra mile and doing that and finding funding where we can.
All right. Is that all? Okay. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 11A passes 5-0. Item 11B, Resolution 10-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute the site development agreement contract for Brush Creek subdivision. Mr. Greer?
The subdivision development agreement is for Brush Creek subdivision, consisting of 45 residential lots. The bonds have been set at $686,520 for a reclamation bond and a performance bond of $2,577,277.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Epstein.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. 11B, four ayes and one abstention. Item 11C, Resolution 11-24, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, to name a consultant for professional design services for the police department/court facility and remodel of the existing space. Police Chief Humphries.
Yes. We, if you've been to PD any time in recent years or been here during court, you can understand that we are, our space is so limited, and it's time for us to grow. And we've seen that need, addressed that from administrative staff, that that's something to move forward in. I do want to say this is the early stages. I think when the fire department come with the same situation, there was some fear that this process was further along than it was. And actually, this is the preliminary stages. We need a design that would fit our needs, find out what that cost is, and it's a lengthy process. So we're not digging dirt anytime soon. But we did put out for RFQs, and we were fortunate to get 10 different firms that had submitted packets. Lot of quality, quality firms. We simulated a team to go through that, review all that stuff. We called chiefs that these firms had built facilities for. We vetted them, and we narrowed it to four. And then that four, we brought them in, did face-to-face interviews, and the committee that we selected, without a doubt, WOLD, architecture and engineering was our selection. We feel like they understand us, they understand what Fairview is, and they want to give us a facility that resembles Fairview, and not something that's, we're not Franklin, we're not Murphishboro, that's unique to us. And we believe we have found the firm that can do that. So we're asking for consideration in that, that to choose them as our firm as we move forward. And that's all I have, but we have representatives from WOLD here tonight. I don't know who's going to speak, Steve, or who's going to speak, but I'll let them come up, tell them a little, you a little bit about their firm, and we just ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Rippon. I'm a structural architect with WOLD Architects. We used to be Hart Fleeden and Roberts. So you've probably been in a couple of our buildings, like Bridgestone Arena and Roman Auditorium. We've been around for 114 years. But in 2019, we were acquired by WOLD, which our staff went from 50 to over 300. But as the chief said, they vetted us pretty well. I mean, I've never had so many questions asked of me during the interview as we had when we came to the interview here. But I think we kind of clicked. We have a criminal justice planner who's done numerous police departments on our staff. His name is John McNamara, and I think he did a great job at helping us get the project. But as the chief mentioned, it's going to be something unique for Fairview. It's something that, you know, as I told the chief and the other select committee members, I said, whatever we come up with, you're going to like it. If you don't, we'll start back over and we'll do it again until you do like it. I think functionally, it'll be, it will be fairly easy functionally, but we've got to come up with that vision that the city has. And this is a wonderful privilege for me, because I grew up in this area. I grew up in Nashville, but I've been all over middle Tennessee during my life. I'd like to introduce Beth Meadows. She's project architect. And this is Jared Brown. He's a design architect. We're all three architects. Beth and I went to UT, and he went to someplace in Mississippi, but I'm not going to tell you where he is. But do you have any questions?
Where are you located?
Which office?
The one you're in.
Brittwood.
Okay.
We're in Williamson County. We've been there since 1991. We have offices in St. Paul, Minnesota, Denver, Colorado, Palatine, Illinois, and Jackson, Tennessee.
I worked with Earl Swinson for many years.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know Ron Lustig?
Yes, I do.
Ron's a good friend. My wife, his wife are close, very close friends. He's a good guy. But yeah, I actually competed against ESA and Earl himself. I know his house is up for sale.
Well, I worked there in the 90s and in the early 2000s, so I worked there, we had the privilege of working there with Earl before he passed.
Yeah, and Dick Miller.
Yes, and Dick. He's a great friend of mine.
Yeah, they're great people.
Yes, they are.
It's a great firm, and like I said, we compete with them on healthcare, because that's what they specialize in. And I don't like working with doctors. I'd rather work with police chiefs.
My daughter's a doctor.
Okay.
Oh, let's go.
But do you have any questions? Like I said, we-
Just excited.
Oh, we are too.
Well, chief, I've, you know, I've been down and up and down the stairwells and through the PD in the past when I had a different job. And it is very tight through there, and I know your concerns. And also, as we grow, we do need to separate our municipal and our PD so that when court happens, we don't have to worry about overlapping. So that, you know, we're always nervous, because both of them happen on Thursday. So sometimes we get nervous that, you know, court's going to last longer than, you know, run into our meeting. So it's going to be wonderful to have your own space, and us have our own space, and we'll intermingle, but, you know, that way, it, you know, it's-
I think also I left out, but then the city doesn't have any other space. And when we vacate downstairs and that's remodeled, that then provides the city with more growth opportunity, more space.
Yes. Well, the city will have more space, and you'll have more space to just have more, better safety situation down there. So we're excited.
Well, the next step is-
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
Is the jail going to be bigger?
The jail?
We have holding, we have, we have holding cells downstairs.
Yeah, you'll have-
Okay, good. Not that I was ever in there.
Not that I was ever in there. But I did lead a lot of children through there when we'd have tours for the children.
Well, I got to tell you a quick funny story. Years ago, I went to Glencliff High School in Nashville. We were playing
How did I?
Did you really?
I graduated from Glencliff.
Really?
I did.
I bet y'all graduated the same year.
No, I don't think so.
I graduated in eighty-three.
I graduated in sixty-eight.
And my mother graduated in the second graduating class in, let's see, in forty-three.
Wow.
Yes.
Well, my dad was set to graduate in sixty-nine from Glencliff High School, But graduated from David Lipscomb, but grew up at seven forty Curry Road.
You know, I live about a block, I grew up about a block from there.
And my grandmother, I lived with her, she was right there too. So we got a lot in common. Go ahead, sorry.
Well, it's really funny. We played Franklin High School at homecoming, so we went down there and spray painted the side of Franklin High School. And we got busted by this Williamson County deputy. His name was Fleming Williams. Fast forward to like forty years and I was doing it jail for him. And believe it or not, he looked at me and he goes, You're one of those Glencliff boys I busted out there painting the side of the school?
Oh, no.
Yeah, how did you remember me? He said, you were the tallest one in the group. But yeah, but
Was he a sheriff's deputy at the time? Because he ended up being sheriff.
I know. He started out as a deputy. He wanted us to put the jail, the new jail with the old jail now beside the high school. And I told him that wouldn't be a good idea. So we put it out where it is off Century Boulevard. But no, this is a real privilege for us, for me and my firm and for Beth and Jared. And we're excited about it. Our next step is, I told the chief, we're going to get a contract and get a schedule and get started.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Do we have any other comments or questions from the board? Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McDonald?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item eleven C passes five zero. Item twelve, Roundtable, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank Rachel. You've really been a big help to me and I really do appreciate you. Hope you have many, many more years here. Want to thank all of the city employees, police department, fire department, administration, public works, finance. And if I missed anybody, y'all can come at me one-on-one, it'll be fine. And chief, I think I might have drove some of them vehicles back when we bought those. I think I brought, drove three of them for y'all back in those days. So we couldn't keep up with Roy Russell though. He could move on down the road. Anyway, that's all I have tonight and I really do thank everybody for being here. Thank you.
Commissioner McDonald?
Just congratulations as well to the marching band and to Rachel on her five-year anniversary. The only thing I wanted to quickly discuss is that I had heard that there was going to be a workshop before our next BOC meeting. I didn't know if that was something that we needed to discuss now to set in stone Or if that was going to happen regarding the conversation around the Parks and Landscaping Committee And the situation they find themselves in. I just think it would be best to address that sooner and later to give them an understanding of where they stand And a task or an objective for them to complete.
Mr. Hall and I were at the P and L Board Meeting on Monday night. And Mr. Hall, can you help me with exactly what was discussed about where they would like to
First thing is we've got the bylaws pretty well. Has Zach sent them to you yet, Rachel? Zach Liston?
No, sir, not yet.
He's getting those ready to send to you in plenty of time. If there is a workshop, this is all we need to know and we'll have representatives here from the Parks and Landscape Board. And at that time, we'll discuss the ordinance on the trees, how we spend the money on the Tree Bank Fund, et cetera. And y'all can guide us in the direction we need to go that way. And I understand that we possibly, MTAS is possibly working on that. So we may be having to wait on that part of it till MTAS completes their version of the new ordinance, Metropolitan Ordinance.
I guess, is that a yes, we are having a workshop or is it in the air?
I'd say if we get, see that, if we have the bylaws, it would be a good idea. If we don't have the bylaws, then probably not, so
Well, my question is, is what comes first? Because as it stands right now, they're not a board, right?
I think the bylaws would come first.
After other bylaws to become a board or an official board.
So we just did it completely wrong the first time around? Is that what happened?
Possibly so.
I'm not sure how the ball was dropped.
Knowing where we were going, you know, we had to get it. Was probably going by some advice from the attorney too. Because he had said the ordinance would have to be changed, I think.
Is our previous attorney, not Patrick.
Yeah, I know, it's been a while. And then it was just from the perspective of the bylaws. I didn't know if the board was going to be wanting involved in that conversation Or are they just going to throw at us what they come up with and then staff and us discuss it? Or I'm just curious on like how that all plays out, really is what I'm trying to, I guess, have a conversation around.
That was reason we'd have a workshop on it before we would, we wouldn't bring it that night. We'd bring it another night, but we'd have a workshop, see if y'all had any input as far as what we need to do as far as the bylaws go.
Sounds like we should probably get together to talk about it, right?
Sorry to continue this. Just clarification, they're going to send the bylaws to Ms. Jones. And Mr. Hogan, Mr. Carter, are you guys going to review them from a standpoint? I bet MTAS probably has some kind of Parks and Landscape, like bylaws or things that, I don't know, Should they be writing the bylaws, I guess, is the question.
They had sent the bylaws to staff and we did review them and send them back to them with some corrections. They then sent them to Mr. Carter and Mr. Carter reviewed them and made some corrections also and sent them back. So I think we're currently just waiting on the final draft. Discuss that during the work session and then if the board wants any additional changes, they can ask for that. If not, the next meeting, we can officially adopt the bylaws.
Awesome, thank you. And then on the Tree Bank Fund, when they came last time and spoke to us, I think we just asked, could we get, at that workshop, could we get a clarification of the staff stance on where the Tree Bank Fund sits? Do we have the ability to spend the Tree Bank Fund? Because we were presented from the Parks and Landscape Board that night that we did not. Could we just have that, our position, so we can clearly understand where we are?
Yes, sir, we'll work on getting that prepared for you. I'll speak to Mr. Carter about it. That was all from me, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Rachel, congratulations again. And I would like to thank Commissioner Beathard for being here this evening and speaking to us And telling us about your future plans. And we all love Sam Whitson and I think he's made a great choice.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations and thank you to Ms. Jones. And thank you to the band for coming tonight. Great, great to continue to have community members out, Mayor, and presenting to them. We got to see them every Friday night from the press box in the fall at the football games. And thank you, Mr. Beathard, for coming out tonight. Appreciate you coming. That is all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
I received phone calls this week and I ensured these residents That I would give a shout out about Todd Bradshaw and his team, About being called and handling some situations quickly. And they just wanted me to publicly say thank you to him and his team. So I want to do that. Rachel, again, congratulations on five years. I hope it's many more. I can't do it without you. And, let's see, remember the egg hunt, March sixteenth? That's going to be so much fun, Saturday at ten AM. And I'm sorry, here.
Boo Nature Park.
Boo Nature Park, yes. Yeah, don't come here, go to Boo Nature Park. You won't find it, they're going to be really hard to find, okay? Let's see. Okay, so Commissioner Beathard, thank you for coming out here. I think Sam has made a great choice and also, you know, he's got a lot of projects that he, you know, Is, you know, gives a push to the governor for us. And one is our Mechatronics Program out at the high school. We need constant funding for that each year. It's very important. So my son was one of the first graduating, was in the first graduating class of the Mechatronics Program. And it's very beneficial to the students who may choose to not go on to college. It's a great path. Or if they do go on to college, they start out with an associate's degree. So it's a wonderful program. So I just want to kind of put that in your ear that we want to continue with that. And of course, I feel like Sam Whitson's going to, you know, take care of us and get that light in, Like he said, you know, before he leaves office. But if by chance, that doesn't happen, you know, that's something that's very important to Fairview to get done. So, let's see. And congratulations to the marching band. Like Vice Mayor Butler said, I've been on sidelines taking pictures for a long time for the football team, Over twenty years now. And Vice Mayor Butler's up in the press box. I think all of us pretty much are at the, you know, at the stadium when they have their football games. And this Beetlejuice performance was amazing. So I really look forward to seeing what they have planned for this upcoming football season. I want to thank the staff. Y'all always do such a great job. Mr. Hogan and Patrick Carter, city staff, the police, that's another thing. I've gotten so many comments about our officers and how polite and helpful they are. And the citizens just, not just as being mayor and getting calls and texts, But owning a small business here and people coming through all the time. And every third person says, this isn't about shipping, this is about the city. And to get so many amazing compliments from, you know, the community. I just feel this, you know, we're unified now. And they really appreciate our police and our fire and our staff and they're just so complimentary. So I always want y'all to know that the citizens in our community see this. They see what y'all are doing and I really appreciate it. I appreciate the boards and I think, oh, one thing. What I would like to ask Mr. Greer is we've got some citizens who've asked for us to look into the dump trucks again. I told them I would speak about that tonight, ask about it if we could. They're coming through Castleberry and they have a construction road. So I've been out there a few times, I know that you have. We've talked to the superintendent, but this has become a problem again. So I'm not sure how to remedy this. I don't know if we can block something off or if we can, you know, I've tried to talk with the dump truck drivers and that didn't go very well. So I think I need help with that. So just, you know, if we can do something to help the citizens in Castleberry To not have them flying through there and use their construction entrance, I would appreciate that.
I will reach out to them first thing in the morning.
And I know you will. You always do such an awesome job with taking care of stuff like that. Well, I think that's everything. I hope I didn't miss anything. And as I always say, let's keep our city beautiful and help pick up trash and not throw out. I entertain a motion to adjourn.